Regular council meeting is called to order at 6:00 P.M. Next item on the agenda is additions and deletions to the agenda. Is that correct?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Shabana?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes, I'd like to add, it's a little odd, I've never done it, but I'd like to add after, prior to number four, after three and prior to four, a vendor permit discussion.
Make a motion?
That was.
Motion has been made. Second, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Aye is have it, and the motion is carried. Councilmember Alfred Chase? Do you have any additions or deletions? Okay, Treasurer Johnson, you're going to, I believe, ask that we make a motion for approval to set the new tax rate?
Yes.
Is that...
Yeah.
Okay, so may I have a motion to add to the agenda, approval to set the new tax rates? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
What about discussion?
Aye.
We will discuss it. So, no, we want, we want to, we will discuss it before I say carried, okay?
Who seconded?
Did you second it? Did you, you seconded it?
I first.
Who seconded the motion? Roll it back. I have a motion. Do I have a second? This is to do the tax rate.
Second.
I have... Welcome to tonight's council meeting. I have a motion and a second, okay? All those in favor, once again, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Post say nay. I have had it, and the motion is carried, and we will add that item right after the vendor permit discussion by Councilmember Curtis, okay? Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Regular meeting minutes of August 19, 2024, special meeting minutes of August 23, 2024, payroll warrants of August 22, 2024, and September 9, 2024, accounts payable warrants for August 26, 2024, August 31, 2024, August, September 2, 2024, September 9, 2024, and then liquor licenses, vendor permits, special events permits. Anybody have any objections or additions or questions regarding the consent agenda?
Only, I have one, not a minute. On the regular meeting minutes of August 19, under the mowing bids, we had, if I remember correctly, told Mr. Burnier to consult with his mechanic and decide which bid to go with, and we adopted that act. They said that the motion was to go with you from...
You're correct. We did ask him to go and consult with his mechanic, and if there was an issue, he was going to come back to us. So, will you just adjust that?
Yeah, I'll add it. I wasn't here as well.
Are you good with the change to that, if we change the minutes?
Right, yeah.
So, it would say, made a motion to approve the bid from Newport Farm and Garden, however, DPW is going to consult with his mechanic and report back to the council. You're good with that?
Thank you.
No, sure, thank you. You got that? Jim?
No.
Okay, good. Okay, so with all of that said, as amended on the August 19, 2024, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the amendment just made to the, wording amendment made to the August 19, 2024 minutes?
So, motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Aye is have it, and the motion is carried. Okay, we are now going to, Councilmember, your agenda, item that was added.
So, involves Mr. Fred Leclair, who is here tonight, have been to his property two or three times. He has a food trailer that is, was at what I call the old Elmwood Dairy, he sold them. He got an amendment, remove up the street, and now it is at his house. And they had a generator running, and Travis paid him a visit. Travis and I spoke about it, and Travis had no issues, just said, I don't think I'd want a generator running all day beside my house either. So, Mr. Leclair got rid of the generator, had an electrician wire it to his house, and had to throw a lot of food away because he wasn't sure what to do, and I said, well, my opinion is, I think you should amend your permit. I'm in the, so I'm just a go-between, I have not talked to Mr. Johnson about this, but what I'm told is that Mr. Leclair, and I have the packet, if you want to look at it, it simply says amendment to address, so what he wants to do is do it at his house instead of where he was at Elmwood Dairy and at the garage shop. Travis said he had, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Travis told me there were no issues with him, with traffic, and it was a generator mess taking care of itself. I told Mr. Leclair, you should go see Mr. Johnson and apply, simply amend the address. I need to, last week, and then, I don't know what happened, but he did not get put on the agenda, something about city manager being away for a few days, so I said, I can only get you on the agenda and put it in front of all of us, so it's not just me hearing him, it's all of us, and it also gives Mr. Johnson an opportunity to weigh in, so that's really all I have to say about it.
Okay, so to that point, right, our city manager was going away, I had, because we're doing interviews this evening, and it's going to be a long executive session, I had requested of the city manager, we'll be working on the agenda to keep it a narrow agenda and only do specific emergencies, so that directive came directly from me. Okay, so you're here, would you come on up and explain, tell us what's going on, and we'll hear what we can...
Hi, I'm Fred Leclair, I live in Newport, I've been here my whole life, here in the 70s, dad in business many years here, I know many of you, I've lived next to Mr. and Mrs. Johnson for years as I was growing up. So, I started to retire, worked in the law enforcement, you know, in Burlington area for quite a while, state police service services, I worked with USCIS, I just got off contract with federal, federal police, FPS, and I said, I'm going to retire, I'm going to start a food truck. My son started barbecue, you guys know Fred from last year, but that's here nor there, that should have, we're not going to bring that up anymore, that should have been a discussion. Fred's now with me in my food truck, and I said, I'm going to do breakfast and lunch. Well, I want to amend my, like I spoke to Mr. Curtis, what do I do? I want to amend my thing, I'm not there anymore, I'm quiet. Travis came, and my wife spoke to him, and he spoke to me, and he said, the generator, I've got a couple complaints, no problem, I'm all about fixing things, so I really was like, that's not a problem, it's a generator I can run, but we fixed it. Called my electric truck, came, we ran a 55-foot cord, now my trailer's plugged into the house, quiet, I put a brand new system on the top for, for the vent, very quiet, and it came and hear the thing running, I think Travis, I don't think, I don't think he's been up there yet, I think, I don't know if Clark's hurt yet, but I'm willing to show anybody, it's empty. I threw a lot of food away, a lot. I haven't been working this thing for weeks, I had hip surgery, I fell, then went back and would deal with this, my wife just got out of surgery in hospital for three weeks in Barmouth, so I'm down. They got what they needed, so I brought up to Mr. Johnson, he sent me a voicemail and said, unfortunately, I couldn't get it on the agenda because Jonathan was on vacation. I said, why, I go until Friday, normally, I go Friday to noon, so I said, he didn't even want to save me a trip for me here on Monday, and I said, this just doesn't right. We did this last year for the eclipse, it seemed like my stuff was getting held, and then this, we can do it next week, maybe, if we can get it in here.
It's on the agenda.
I'm not sure why this is happening, but it needs, it needs to stop. Because I'm not sure, is this going to happen next year when I apply for my permit for the city for my food truck? We're going to hold it?
So, let me explain to everybody, okay? If anybody wants something on the agenda, you can contact me, because I do the agenda, and of course, I work with the city manager, and we try to get as much as we can together, so if you want something on the agenda, please come directly to me, and I will speak to whoever, make sure we have picked work that's needed, so that nobody misses that, okay? Because the agenda is the mayor's agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, please, just make sure that I'm aware of it, and if there's an issue for getting on a specific agenda, for example, if it's a special meeting or something like that, I would, you know, but we don't want to have any of these oopsies anymore, and sometimes it happens, and I apologize. So, it's on the agenda now, so is there any issue with this?
No, the only reason I moved it to the 16th because Jonathan was gone, and the agenda had already been put out, okay, that's why I couldn't, I explained that to Fred. The only other issue I have, and Chini may have some suggestions on this, this is in a residential area, Wayne Olive has never been a permit, vendor permit for residential area.
It's an urban residential.
What?
It's urban residential, and like we discussed before, that's what it is.
Can I finish?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's let Mr. Johnson go, go ahead.
Address that to Mr. Chini, but far as I know, it's a residential area.
Okay.
Now, I understand Fred has the house, there used to be a duty parlor in the house, but that was an in-office, an in-house business permit, that was issued to the zoning. I don't, it'd make difference to me if you want to do this permit for him, but the only question I have, it's in a residential area, and to my knowledge, there's never been a food truck in a residential area, in city events or commercial areas.
Okay.
I don't know if Frank's got anything to add to that or not.
Do you have anything, Mr. Chini, to add to that? I mean, do you see any red flags here?
First of all, nobody's asked me for a zoning permit, because that's, this is strictly a vendor permit issue at this point. It is a residential area, we have two residential districts, general residential and urban. It is a residential district, though. It's actually, commercial district is actually the border of his property, so the next lot over is commercial, his lot is in a residential district, so that is correct.
So, my question is to the council members, if there is no legal issue, are you good with this?
I'm just on the, the traffic. Is there any traffic issues?
So, I went up there to speak with Fred, and like, that was my only concern, right? Like, is there enough place for people to park? Like, if it gets really busy there, it's a tight street, there's parking that's only allowed on one side of that street, I believe it's only on the east side, no, the west side of the street, right? Yes, so it's only parking allowed on one side, so if, you know, people are there and there's a ton of traffic, that would be the only issue that I have as, you know, the police, but other than that, it's, it's good to go on my side, the generator's benefit, so I don't think parking will be an issue.
Can I say one more?
Sure, but look at me, one second. So, Councilmember Alfred Chase, if there are no legal issues with this, are you fine if we do, do a motion to approve this? We're still discussing.
Okay, I'm not against it, Fred, I'm just concerned if it's, I want a residential area maybe set up.
Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure the legal...
That's my only concern.
So, my question to the council members are, could we have a motion approving this pending the mayor and the city manager researching any legal issues within the next 48 hours?
Make the motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
No, second.
Motion and a second, comments for the discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion is carried, aye is have it, so I need 48 hours, but we are going to approve this pending anything, okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you. And so, going forward, if you want to get something on the agenda, reach out to me, Mr. Johnson, the city manager, he would definitely discuss it with me, okay? If he's not here, but reach out to me. Thank you.
Will someone make it?
Yes, will definitely. We're going to keep it secret, so he won't know. Of course, we're going to reach out to you. Next item on the agenda is to, can I have one more, that you just gave, the permit, okay? To approve financing for the police department cruiser.
Set tax rate.
Forget, forget what I just said. The next item on the, see, don't you feel comfortable making sure that the mayor gets the stuff on? So, the next item on the agenda is to set the tax rate, and I am going to recognize the treasurer to bring us up to speed on it.
Yeah, I'd like to get this approved tonight, because I got Frank to put it in the added bill grant list, but I can't run the bills until we get this approved. I mean, it's a formality, it is what it is, you can't change anything, the figures are what they are, based on the grant, current grant list and the budgets. So, and the earlier we can get the taxes out, the earlier we get...
The money in?
Hopefully.
Mr. Chini, anything you want to add or say, you're open?
No.
Okay, so, I need a motion.
So, motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Have a second.
Have a motion and a second, discussion?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Thank you. Hi, since this has been, this has been added to the agenda for tonight, I didn't have any documentation, so I don't know what the grand list is. For many years, it seems to be exactly 320 million, and I'm just curious, is it still at 320 million, or are we raising it up as things get added to the grand list? So, this is based on the August 12, 2024 grand list, that was 3.239918, but that's what we're asking. And was that the same as the previous? I'm sorry, is that the grand list as of August, oh, 12, 2024?
Yeah.
Was that the same the previous year?
I think it's a little more of it, Frank.
Yeah, 2.9 million dollars over last year, approximately.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If you could just repeat the motion before we vote, please.
Right, and we are, but Councilmember first has a question.
Just looking at the paper, I think it's just a simple error, it says the tax rates are based on a grand list of 3,239,918, unless I'm reading this wrong.
Oh, you're right, sorry, it's 32.
32, okay. That's what I thought.
Sorry, got my comma wrong, so, the numbers are all like commas wrong.
Got it.
Yes?
Okay.
Okay, so, we're going to read...
What was that number, Clark?
Do you want to?
No, tell me, you tell me.
It says now, 3,239,918, it should be 32.
Yeah, well, that number, Clark, is the grand list divided by 100, that's what, that's figuring out the calculator rate.
Well, do we know what the rate is?
Do you want to know what the rate is going to be? I can give you the rate, anybody who wants one.
Yeah, I think that's what Councilmember Curtis...
The residential rate is going to be 33846. So, in the end, Clark, the comma got in the right spot.
Yeah, the numbers are right. We can subtract that one off.
I retract the first statement.
So, the motion that was approved and seconded, so Councilmember Curtis would like the motion repeated, so the motion should...
Councilmember...
What did I say?
Curtis.
I'm going to roll tonight.
It was, it was the handsome cat.
Yeah, it's just the fact that I have this empty seat here to put on my cell phone so happy, I'm elated. So, anyway, the motion was to approve the tax rate for 2024, 2025, based on the grand list launched on August 12, 2024.
Thank you. May I ask, Joseph Gressler raised this a little along.
Okay, right, but I, that's the motion, okay? We had the motion, and then we had the second. Okay, Mr. Gressler, I'm going to let you ask your question.
Thank you. My question is, if you would be kind enough to allow Mr. Johnson to read the entirety of the tax rate, so both the residential, non-residential, the parts of the tax rate that are municipal and educational, and also the, the other little bits and pieces that griddle around the edges.
Yes, we will do that for you, Mr. Gressler. Treasurer?
Okay, so, 24, 25 residential rates, your municipal rate will be at 1.5419 per hundred, appropriations are going to be .0525, the exempt, the voted exemptions are .0225, and the residential education rate is $1.7677, making the total rate, the resident, residential Okay, the non-residential municipal rate is the same, 1.5419, appropriations are the same, .0525, exemptions are the same, .0225, and the non-residential education rate is 1.8276, so the non-residential rate would be 3.4445. I can send you a copy tomorrow if you want. Can you give me?
Thank you, okay.
I got three, I got some extra copies.
And the motion and a second, all those, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Aye is have it, and the motion is carried, and thank you, Treasurer. Okay, next item on the agenda is to approve the financing for the police department cruiser with anticipated vote, and I'm going to ask the police chief to please come on up and address, thank you.
All right, so, in our capital plan, every year, we replace a cruiser. Typically, in the past, I've always replaced, since I was chief, and even prior to me being chief, we replaced our cruisers with Ford Explorers from Hayes Ford here, and regardless about getting them locally, they'll still come from a fleet management group that's made specific just for police vehicles. We've had some issues with the Fords recently, within the last couple of years, flex pipes, it seems like they're always in the garage for something, a lot of agencies are transitioning to Tavos, so this year, I have specked out a Tahoe, I got a quote about a year ago, September would be a year for a Tahoe, because there, there's one group in Mass, basically, that does all of the eastern coast to get these police vehicles, it's not like I can just go around to the latherers and have them give me a quote, they all come from this one company. He said, yep, I got one saved for you, checked back in in January, the salesman that I had talked to had left, nope, don't see your name on the list, checked back in in like June, July, because I knew the new budget year was coming, nope, don't even know who you are, so had to restart the process again. Luckily, they did have one that was basically designated for Vermont, so Vermont's like allotted a certain amount of vehicles through this fleet service program, and they had one extra one there, so I said, yep, I will take it, and now I'm coming to you to ask for the approval of the financing. I think Mr. Johnson got quotes from Community and Passomsec, I know he was working on getting one from MNT, and I'm not sure if that came in, and I'll let Mr. Johnson speak on that, I'm not sure which one was actually the lowest. The cost for this is $55,000, and I will tell you that when I got this original quote back in September, they quoted me $43,000, and he had told me, he's like, because I told him, I said, look, I'm not getting this until next July, and he had said, you're going to want to pay it on about a $10,000 increase, and he was actually pretty close, so that's, that's where we're at. I don't know if you guys have any specific questions? Comes with a standard warranty of five years, 100,000 mile powertrain warranty. I don't know if you have anything else specific that you guys have?
I can speak to too, there's, so if you look at the capital budgeting in our debt retirement in the budget, there is a portion where you see all the PD cruisers that the chief of anger had mentioned, and all they're laid out with the interest and payments, so this is something that we have been budgeting for, that we put, that we build into the budget on an annual basis.
I'm here.
Sure.
Treasurer, right, I did deal with MNT Bank, I haven't heard a thing from them, I've had to contact with them twice, but I seem to, I'm dealing with a financing outfit out in California, so, but I haven't heard anything from them, and I think Travis wants to get one, and we got the two local banks, I know, the one would be dealing in California, over there.
At the other side of...
So, Passomsec's rate is 5.625, and Community's rate, they quoted me 4... And Community's rate, they quoted me 4.82 fixed.
So I guess my question is, is there a benefit to doing monthly payments versus semi-annual payments or vice versa?
I think if you do a monthly payment, you get paid off quicker. And I think the interest rates might be a little less.
And your thought is that pass-through wise, um, monthly payments are easier to control?
Yeah, yeah, because paying the net six months.
Pesumsik.
Right. And then if I'm not, so Pesumsik has, the offer expires on September 30.
I think to accept the, uh, first option from Community National for monthly payments. Fix rate at 4.82%. Second?
I have a motion and a second, any comments?
I just, I just had a question. A dumb question. Uh, when, when the budget is approved, um, and like we say the capital budget is approved and then the taxpayers pay whatever the sum of money total that we pay. Um, when we approve the vehicle or when you approve the vehicle, did, did you approve at that time 55,000, which was also in the monies that were collected from us, um, for this year? In other words, was the cruiser in there as a $55,000 amount?
Versus a 45?
That, that all the citizens paid for in their taxes? Or when you approved it, did you approve just that you would do a loan and basically we approved a small fraction of how much the cruiser would, would cost?
My building, yeah. So under the capital plan for FY '24, '25, um, we set aside $50,000. Uh, obviously this is 55, right? This is just me trying to do the best guess I could. And it was obviously a little bit low, so I'll have to absorb that in my budget. But, um, and then next year, obviously I can fix that and adjust it as we go from year to year. But, you know, we set aside 50,000 in the capital plan for '24, '25.
So does that mean that that amount of money got added to the total amount that Jim needed to collect from us citizens? So the $50,000 is there and you don't have to take a loan?
Well, my understanding is that it comes out of our debt services regardless.
You're absolutely right. That's how it works. Comes out of the debt set. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, councilmembers? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it and the motion is carried. Okay. Okay, and the next item on the agenda is fire chief interviews with a potential executive session for 1VSA Section 313A3. Okay. May I please have a motion to enter into executive session to interview candidates for the fire chief interviews in accordance with 1VSA Section 313A3 and invite the candidates as called upon individually to enter that executive session and to also include the fire department designees who are here today? I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I have a question, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Was Travis included in that list?
I'm Travis.
I'll make the friendly amendment soon.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll teach you to get a car in Sedona.
Okay, I have a friendly amendment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, the motion is carried and we are in executive session. Yeah, I might just keep it. Okay, we, we're out of executive session. No action was taken. Next item on the agenda is request for proposal for citywide reappraisal, potential executive session 1VSA Section 313A1A. May I please have a motion to enter executive session and to invite the zoning administrator and the city manager into that session?
So.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post say nay. Eyes have it, the motion is carried and we are in executive session. Okay, we're out of executive section, uh, session. No action was taken. Um, may I have a motion for the city manager, um, to be authorized to issue the RFP, RFP once it is finalized?
So.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? For the discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it and the motion is carried. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is, um, personnel evaluations, potential executive session 1VSA Section 313A3. May I have a motion to find the premature public general knowledge of the confidential attorney-client communications made for providing legal services to the city council would place the city in a substantial disadvantage because disclosure of the otherwise confidential advice and communication would harm the city by waiving the city attorney-client privilege under 1VSA Section 313A1.
Do you say that again? No, I'm joking. So.
Want to borrow my pen? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it and the motion is carried. May I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss confidential attorney-client communications with the city attorney for the purpose of providing professional legal services and invite the city attorney into the executive session pursuant to 1VSA Section 313A1 to discuss, um, personnel evaluation under 1VSA Section 313A3. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say, post say nay. Eyes have it and the motion is carried. We are in executive session. Ready? Pam, you ready?
We're going down with the sun.
We are, yeah, we are out of executive session. No action taken. The next, the next. Item on the agenda is comments by members of the public. Okay, I'm going really fast. You ready? Okay, members of the audience are reminded that members of the press are present and that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel. Members of the audience are further reminded that Newport City Council meetings are for the purpose of allowing council members to conduct city business. City council meetings are the only time the city council discusses, deliberates, and decides upon city matters. City council meetings are held in public to promote transparency and accountability in government, but are distinct from public hearings or town meetings and that they are not meetings of the public. Members of the public shall be afforded a reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the city council. To conduct orderly and efficient meetings, I kindly request the public's cooperation and compliance with the published guidelines when participating in the meeting. Thank you. You may now step forward. Claire, it is yours. Please just state your name and...
Claire McIntyre, Newport, Vermont. This is a thank you to Police Chief Bingham and his staff. After attending the last forum on policing and trafficking, I practiced closer observation of the community around me and its residents. In the last six months, on three different occasions, I observed situations in which more than one resident was potentially at risk for their welfare and safety. On all three occasions, Chief Bingham's staff listened patiently and carefully to the information I provided, and in each case, they checked out the situation. Another such forum is scheduled for September 25th, 6:00 PM at the Gateway. I urge all to attend. Observe with your own eyes. Listen with your own ears. Ask your own questions and think with your own minds. We can all do our best to help the law, law enforcement to maintain the welfare and safety of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, new business. Council President, Ms. Shawna.
I do. So the state is gonna be celebrating the 250 years. Uh, Newport's gonna be part of that. And we have two volunteers, uh, Andrew Pitts from, a writer from MB, and Adam Ortiz, um, who are pretty active residents. Thank you both of you.
Yeah, thank you. Looking forward to seeing all the great work you do with our governor's committees. Um, Councilmember Shawna?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
Um, yep, quickly. Went to barbecue with a badge. Seemed to be a huge success. Saw Mr. Bash on there and a lot of other people. And, um, second thing, Jennifer Beerling sent us on an email. I responded to her regarding the minutes on the city website. City manager, I think within a day, updated the city, um, minutes, council minutes. And city manager told me he is working early this week, which I'm assuming is either today or tomorrow, on planning commission, historic review board. And she mentioned in her email cemetery commission. To my knowledge, they do not have minutes. That's it.
That's correct. And the city manager has done that today. Just has a couple of tweaks, um, that he needs to do. Councilmember Upper Chase?
Well, thank you.
Treasurer Johnson?
No.
We lost our fee manager. Okay, um, I have something, the, uh, extra mile nominations this year coming up for November is the extra mile. So I'm asking everybody out there to make a recommendation on your heroes or heroines again so that we can pick three. Last year, we picked three people. They got their pictures up and we did a whole write-up on them. And so put your thinking caps on and see who you'd like to recommend. Um, old business. President Pashon?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Shawna?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
No, thanks.
Councilmember Upper Chase?
Well, thank you.
Treasurer Johnson?
None.
Okay. Next is to set the next regular scheduled council meeting for September 16, 2024. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay.
Aye.
Eyes have it and the motion is carried. Okay, next item on the agenda is to adjourn the council meeting at 11:09. Do I have a motion?
So I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay.